We're going to have our closed session.
In here, we'll just boot everybody out.
Okay.
I'd be glad we can get to go back into the chambers again. Time to rock and roll.
Okay, 7:00 o'clock, ready? Everybody ready?
We're good.
Okay. Before I call the City Council meeting to order, I just want to make this mention of welcoming everybody. This is the first time in quite a while we've actually had the face-to-face meeting. It is very nice to see everybody here, and I want to welcome everybody at this time. So with that, I will call the Houston City Council meeting for April 12th to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Buonan.
Aye.
Councilmember Rush.
Here, aye.
Councilmember Buck.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Hill.
Aye.
Mayor Carr.
Aye.
Please rise for the flag salute and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Dear God, bless this gathering, our audience, and all who participate tonight. Thank you for our city workers, keep them and their families safe. Give our city leaders the knowledge, the insight, and the conviction to make decisions that will benefit our community. Keep us all on track to do your will. Help those who are less fortunate, especially the homeless. Please protect our men and women in the military. We pray for their safe return to their families. As we all know, freedom is not free. Finally, Lord, please bless this great nation and the city of Houston. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, first item is public comment. Do we have anybody from?
We received no requests for public comment.
Okay. I'll go through this. Members of the audience may address the City Council on any item of interest to the public pertaining to the city and may step to the podium, state their name, and city of residence for the record, and make their presentation. Please limit presentations to five minutes. Since the City Council cannot take action on matters not on the agenda unless the action is authorized by Section 54954.2 of the Government Code, items of concern which are not urgent in nature can be resolved more expeditiously by completing and submitting to the city clerk a citizen's request form which may be obtained from the city clerk. Do we have anybody here that is going to make comment? Hearing none, we will go on to item 2.1, presentations.
Help me, Dan. Okay.
Yep.
You got it? Okay. All good? Okay. Well, in between this council meeting and the next council meeting, we will be celebrating, so to say, Administrative Professionals Week. And so now is a fitting time for us to recognize our administrative professionals for the city of Houston. And to help assist with that, we have a proclamation to help honor our administrative professionals with the city of Houston. And we have here tonight, one of our administrative professionals, Alexis Rice-Peltier. She's our customer service clerk with the city of Houston. And I think it's so fitting that she's here tonight because in so many aspects, Alexis is the face of City Hall. She is one of the first people that you're going to encounter on the phone or coming down to City Hall, and so she really represents us well. And so to be able to accept this proclamation for us, I think, is really quite an honor for me to have you here. So with that, Alexis is going to accept the proclamation.
Okay, thank you. And I have the proclamation. We'll go ahead and read it this time. National Administrative Professionals Week, August, or April 18th through the 24th. Whereas administrative professionals play an essential role in coordinating the office operations of business, government, educational institutions, and other organizations. And whereas administrative professionals are vital contributors in today's team-oriented work environment, and are key frontline public relations ambassadors for their organizations. And whereas the work of administrative professionals today requires advanced knowledge and expertise in communications, computer software, office technology, project management, organization, customer service, and other vital office management responsibilities, and most importantly, have the willingness to learn and accept new challenges. And whereas Administrative Professionals Week is observed annually in the workplaces around the world to recognize the important contributions of administrative support staff and in support of the International Association of Administrative Professionals. And now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and the city council that we recognize and extend appreciation to our dedicated and skilled staff and hereby proclaim April 18th through the 24th, 2021, as National Administrative Professionals Week. And be it further proclaimed that the city of Houston, the Houston City Council does hereby recognize the outstanding service that the city administrative staff provides to the citizens of the city of Houston.
When she answers the phone, you can tell the smile is in her voice.
Moving on to consent calendar, are there any items that the council members would like to pull from the consent calendar?
Mayor, I'd like to pull the warrants. I have one question.
Okay. Any other items that would like to be pulled? Hearing none, can we go ahead and then vote on both of them at the end?
You should do 3.1, sir.
Okay. At this time, I will accept a motion to approve Consent Calendar, item 3.1. Approve the minutes of the regular meeting of March 22nd, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Buonan.
Aye.
Councilmember Rush.
Aye.
Councilmember Buck.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hill.
Aye.
Mayor Carr.
Aye. Okay. Councilmember Buonan, item 3.2.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, as I looked at the warrants, I could figure most of them out. But I have a question on Mary Mellow Truck Repair. It's a big number, $25,500. What was that for?
So that was for the repair of our Vaccon truck. And we did make a mid-year adjustment for that repair. It happened earlier this year. And I think Jose can explain a little more about what happened to the Vaccon vehicle.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. So that item was a repair on the Vaccon truck that we took into Mellow Truck Repair. It is the large pump on the backside of the truck. In the past, we've been repairing just the seals on it. I want to say maybe every two to three years, we were replacing seals. It finally pitted through. It's a large pump, so brand-new, you're looking at about $34,000, $25,000 for refurbished one. And taking their advice, you know, it was just as good to go with the refurb considering that the truck has got a lot of other issues that we've got to deal with. We've been having a lot of little issues pop up here and there, but never a big-ticket item to this extent. Actually, we did have a few repairs. I think there were some tanks a couple of years ago. I remember Councilmember Sam bought the tanks at the time, and that was kind of a big ticket. So it's beginning to have some wear and tear and beginning to cost us a little bit more every time we repair it, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Have we got a price for a new one?
No, I have had vendors coming in constantly, so we actually, I brought it up to Mary and Anna today. We are, you know, considering bringing that up. I think in the past, we leased that truck to begin with, and then we bought it. So that might be something that we want to start looking at, just because that truck is starting to age quite a bit, so.
That truck's old. Something we need to get a price.
And it's very vital, very vital, so.
Thank you. With that, Mayor, I'll make a motion that we accept 3.2 on the consent calendar.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Buonan.
Aye.
Councilmember Rush.
Aye.
Councilmember Buck.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hill.
Aye.
Mayor Carr.
Aye. Moving on to item 5.1, Adopt Uncodified Ordinance 2021-01, Amending the Development Agreement by and between the City of Houston and Fitzpatrick Homes Houston LLC relating to the development known as Euclid North.
Rachel.
Good evening, members of the council. City Attorney Schroeder and Mayor, oh, Mayor, is that better?
Yes.
Rachel Weiss, Community Development Director with the city of Houston. Tonight, we have before you a request to adopt Uncodified Ordinance Number 2021-01. It's an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Houston amending the development agreement by and between Fitz, by and between the city of Houston and Fitzpatrick's Homes- Houston LLC relating to the development known as Euclid North. For our audience and the public, a development agreement is a legally binding contract between a property owner and/or developer and a local government. Such agreements may specify the development process through phasing of a master plan community, the development plan and necessary public infrastructure requirements, et cetera. The purpose of a development agreement is to secure public benefit beyond those achievable through existing ordinances and regulations. For the background for this one, the Euclid North subdivision is a 51-lot, low-density residential subdivision on 16.4 acres, which was approved in March of 2006. On January 8th, 2007, the Houston City Council adopted Ordinance Number 2006-14, approving the initial development agreement between the city and Fitzpatrick's Homes. It was amended in November 13th, or November 13th, 2017. It was extended for the purpose of extending the map, which was set to expire in 2018, and they were still under construction, they were still putting infrastructure and moving along. And so that was extended by 48 months to January 16th, 2022. Fitzpatrick's Homes agreed to the raised development impact fees and some conditions, as well as some public improvements, such that there was a water meter, radio tower installation, and police observation device security camera. So today, we, well, not today, but February of 2021, this year, Fitzpatrick's Homes contacted staff to request a second extension to the account. And the changes are for the development timeline due to the need to extend infrastructure for Euclid South. So they have finished the infrastructure for Euclid South. They have started construction of the homes. We've issued a few building permits for those, and they are now extending that infrastructure through Euclid North. You have the drainage basin, dual-use basin and water treatment out there. And so once they are able to put that infrastructure in, then they can build homes. As a part of this request to extend the development agreement, they have agreed to pay the updated street fee, which was inaccurately reflected in Amendment Number 1. So we did not raise the rate on them, we just accurately reflected it in this agreement. This project was heard, or the development agreement was heard on March 23rd, 2021, before the Planning Commission. As such, the Planning Commission recommends that the Houston City Council adopt Ordinance Number 2021-01, amending the development agreement with Fitzpatrick Homes relating to the development known as Euclid North. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Rachel or Mary, I know that we're looking at a difference of about $2,500 if we approve this, that the city gets. But my question is, what are the old development impact fees versus the new ones? Because if we do not extend this agreement, the new development impact fees would apply. So what are the old ones? What are the new ones and the difference?
That's correct. Our new current development impact fees are $46,881, so it's a difference of-
Mary, say that again, I can't.
It's a difference of $13,687 from the old to the current.
Okay. So if my math is correct, even though we would correct the old information and gain about $2,500, in effect, we would be, if I'm looking at the difference, there's about $11,000 that, I'll use the word "we lose" in approving this. Because if we don't approve it, we go to the new development impact fees as of 1/16/2022. So my question is, my difficulty is, is that, yeah, we'll be gaining $2,500 per unit for 50 houses, but in effect, we'll be losing the new development impact fees. So it's hard to support that based on the fact that we still have to maintain the, all the surrounding areas, and we've applied, we've estimated that the new fees will be this much. So it's hard for me to support an extension knowing that we could be losing some funds that we've already tried to estimate.
If I may, we also have a condition in the development agreement that we can increase the fees 3% per year, as like a COLA. So that would provide, if we did that, it would provide an additional almost $5,300 per resident.
That's for two years or one year?
It would be from the 2017 agreement, where the fees were increased in 2017, to whenever the homes are built, which we would anticipate 2022. So it would be five years.
But there would still be, in effect, a loss to the city?
There is.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Rachel.
Any other questions, comments from council?
I have one. Back in the original agreement between Fitzpatrick Homes and, I think it was somebody else, it wasn't Coffin and Broad, there was a part, you know, I could be really off-base on this one, but when we built the bridge, there was supposed to be a recovery when they started to break home on the first ground, and it was split between the two developers. Whatever happened of that? It was a $3 million project for the bridge.
And there was supposed to be a what?
A split, returned back to the city. The city ended up paying for that bridge.
Oh.
But the developers were supposed to refund the city at the, at some point when they first broke houses. I couldn't find any verbiage at all in the agreement. Is that gone? Is it, do we have any information at all on that?
We would have to research that. I have no knowledge of that. If it's not in the development agreement, if it's not in the original one, I don't know that it made it into the agreement.
Yeah. I just understood from the past that it was in the agreement, but if we don't have the original?
No, we have the original. We can look at it.
Okay, if we could, please. That's all I have.
I just have one comment on this, is that this development, along with Euclid South, have been ready to go for quite a while. The developers were ready, the contractors were ready, but there were circumstances that came in the way. The pandemic, the construction shortage, or the slowdown. And in the past, we have not held developers or contractors, not held them up to new feats. We have gone ahead and honored the original agreements we, that they set out in the beginning. When these agreements were made, I was not on council, so I do not know the extent of the agreements. But I am a big supporter of not penalizing somebody for something that was uncontrolled. And I do believe that the developers, both KB and Fitzpatrick, they were held up by elements that was out of their control. So my personal belief is, I would support this ordinance and not penalize them for something that they could not control. Any other questions, comments? This time, I will open it up for public comment.
Good evening, Dennis Fitzpatrick, Fitzpatrick Homes, 4805 Cis Road, Modesto, California.
I didn't know that was you. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Dennis. I've known you forever, and I didn't know that was you.
Everything aged. I want to thank the staff for their presentation tonight. They've been working with us, and we appreciate it. Going back to the beginning of this development agreement back in 2007, I just wanted to kind of bring a couple of things, kind of how this development agreement came about and kind of the process that got it to today. Back in 2007, when we got involved in the property, there was a need for the city for the well, I think. As I'm telling you this, this is going back a long time in my memory, so. But the city, they had the need for well, there was a water issue back then. And the development agreement came, kind of came about because of the need for the well, and we knew we weren't going to build the homes at the time, we're in the, just the start of a major recession that lasted kind of the valley until like in the housing side, 14, 15, you know, so quite a long time. So we tried to work with the city to somehow accommodate, to get the well in, which meant we had to get agreements together, we had to get dedication of land, we had to get easements in and out of our property. That turned into not just a well, but the, we had started with 51 lots, we're down to 50 lots, because we actually gave one of the lots, I think it's a pump-type station on the corner of Euclid and Hatch. And again, this is strictly by memory. So we formed a development agreement, we put a lot of things in place trying to predict the future. Well, the future took a long time with the housing recession, it kind of catches up to speed, to kind of get housing back on our feet. And then we needed, us being the Fitzpatrick company, we needed Euclid South to install their facility so we can start all facilities. And we kind of knew this going in, I'm not trying to by any means complain about them and waiting and different things, but I think the importance of it is, we spent a lot of time back in 2007, working for the city and being good stewards of our property, to ensure the city got what they needed. And now I'm sitting here in front of you guys today saying, I understand there has been a change in the fees, we're finally at a point where we can develop the homes, but I want the city to remember that even though it was a long time ago, we did our part as good stewards to try to get facilities to the city, so I'm asking you today to look at the fees and say that this is a company that's been working with the city, trying to do the right thing and get the facilities for the city, even though they knew that we weren't going to build for a period of time, and take that into consideration when you just look at dollars and cents. We did in 2017, when we came back for an extension to the development, we agreed to the current fees at that time, which are, you know, in our development agreement now. Then the fees did go up again, you know, recently, which I think is last quarter, or the fourth quarter of last year. So again, there's a lot of history to this property, there was a lot of work on both the city side and our side to get the facilities out there. We're anxious to get things going out there, we've started some work, we're going to finish off the park basin, which will be a nice addition to the city. We're going to finish off the wall on Euclid, so it matches the Euclid South. We're going to have a wall along the canal with a bike path and landscaping and different things in there, so it'll, I think, be a real nice asset to the city, and it'll kind of finish off that quarter and make it more ecopestic with the surrounding neighborhoods instead of the fields that have been sitting there unused for, you know, the last 10 to 12 years, plus or minus. Other than that, I'm here, if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I was wondering, Mr. Fitzpatrick, as far as Councilmember Rush's comments about that development agreement that you thought might-
Oh, yeah, let's go back to that.
The bridge?
Yeah.
So have any recollection? To be honest with you, I don't remember anything about the bridge being paid for by developers or not, that doesn't kind of get in my recollection. We were so focused on the well, at the time, there was something going on with the water in the city, I don't remember the exact details of it, but we were so focused on getting the well in and getting the easements for the well. I remember the bridge, I remember going out to bid as a public bid and all that. I just don't have any recollection of anything further than that. I think it, I don't remember, to be honest with you.
I think you have any-
I wouldn't remember if there was a cost to the developer, those kind of things don't slip my mind, but I don't remember, so I don't want to say for a fact there wasn't, but I'm pretty sure there was no fee structure that was above and beyond, because I think it would have been included in the development agreement. We went, we spent a lot of time with the city attorney at the time going through that development agreement, because it was super complicated, knowing that we weren't going to build homes, that we weren't going to file maps of how to get the easements in place and the dedications for the city well within a parcel that we didn't record the final map on. So there's a lot of, months and months of going back and forth to try to figure that out, and ultimately didn't. I think that that's why there's so many, the verbiage in the development agreement is so precise about, if you put this infrastructure in, you do this and that, because we were trying to kind of, it was like a jigsaw puzzle, putting it all together. So I think that if there was something about the bridge, it probably would have been in the development agreement. But again, I don't, I don't remember any other conversation about it other than that.
Okay. I'll accept that. It's just something, like I said, you know, this has been so many years ago, and it's development agreement has changed a couple of times, so mine was just hearsay.
Yeah.
I've never read it, never been able to see it, so.
Yeah, the development really hasn't changed that much other than the fees. We just increased the fees to 2017, fee structure back in 2017, and then the date was extended. I mean, there might have been some minor, like edits or something, but not like deal-type edits.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I appreciate your time. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. Hearing none, I'll bring it back to council. Public hearing is closed. Any other comments or questions from council?
Mayor, if I can, if there is a motion to adopt the ordinance, I request that the motion include these words, waive the second reading of the ordinance. Thank you, sir.
Okay. All right. Hearing no questions or comments. I will move that we adopt Uncodified Ordinance 2021-01, amending the development agreement by and between the city of Houston and Fitzpatrick's Homes Houston LLC relating to the development known as Euclid North. And at this time, I would also waive the second reading. Second.
Councilmember Buonan.
With the comments Mr. Fitzpatrick said, I say aye.
Councilmember Rush.
Aye.
Councilmember Buck.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hill.
Aye.
Mayor Carr.
Aye. Moving on to 6.1, conduct interviews of applicants, hold nominations, and appoint one applicant to the Park and Recs, Parks and Recreation Entertainment Commission. There has been an update to this. We were going to have two interviews tonight. One of the applicants, I believe, has dropped out. So if the council so agrees, I think we can just appoint the new person rather than hold an interview and let them start to serve on our Parks and Recs and Entertainment Commission. Any questions from council?
I wonder if, I agree with you, Mayor, I wonder if she could go up there and just kind of give us a background prior to us deciding.
Thank you.
Should I leave my mask on, or I'll just?
You don't have to.
I'll take it off, so it's a little easier to talk. Hi, I'm Alina Combs. I've, a little background about myself is, I own a business here in Houston with my husband. I've a little background about myself is I own a business here in Houston with my husband. We run a pump company. We install irrigation and domestic pumps for the farmers and residents. I have grown up in Houston, so I'm familiar with the town, with the people, and I would love to serve on the Parks and Recreation Commission and help, help maintain and look to the future for that. So I have a master's degree. That helps maybe. That's some background. Is there any particular questions that you would like to me to answer?
Any questions from council?
I say welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Do we actually need a nomination or since she's the only candidate applying, we can just appoint her?
You, as mayor, have the authority to appoint anyone to any committee or commission subject to approval by the majority of the council. So what you would need is a motion to approve your recommendation to appoint Ms. Combs to the Parks and Entertainment Commission.
Thank you. At this time, I will make a motion to appoint Ms. Combs to the Houston Park Recreation Entertainment Committee. I'll second.
Councilmember Buonan.
Aye.
Councilmember Rush.
Aye.
Councilmember Buck.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hill.
Aye.
Mayor Carr.
Aye.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard.
How are you related to Homer?
Oh, I am his granddaughter-in-law.
Okay.
Oh, do you know Homer Combs?
Anybody going to change their vote?
I don't want to scare you, but I started on the Park and Recs Commission.
I was going to say that.
Oh, great. So that's a little intimidating, but I don't know.
So welcome aboard.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to 7.1, San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Annual Air Toxins Report for 2020.
That's just correspondence for the council. It came in the mail, addressed to all of you. So if you have questions, I'm sorry, I don't have answers.
Could you give them a copy of it?
It's attached to the agenda.
Okay.
It's, if I may.
All right.
It's part of the initiative they've taken over the 30 years, the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District to clean up our air. It's just their testing, a cross-section of the testing and where it's come. So it's just an annual report.
Okay. All right, thank you. We will move on to comment. City manager.
Yes, thank you. Hey, I'd also like to thank our administrative professionals this evening. At the start of the pandemic, we had one administrative professional who was off on maternity leave for several months. And you met Alexis tonight. She, you gave her the resolution. She handled the entire office by herself. She performed the accounting technician work that's outside of her classification, as well as she was training and working with a temporary employee, all while dealing with the phones and dealing with the people knocking on the door because the door of City Hall was locked. So I was really impressed with Alexis's ability to take on all of that responsibility and without any complaint, well, no complaints that I heard. So all of our administrative professionals are very customer service oriented. They work hard and they're very easy to work with. So I am truly appreciative of the environment in the office that they helped create and the work that they do to make our city, you know, the best city in Stanislaus County. So I just wanted to thank them all as well. As you know, Public Health held a vaccine clinic here today from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. and I'd like to thank Stanislaus County Public Health for coming out and doing that. It certainly was helpful for a lot of our residents to be able to come here instead of going down to Turlock or in Modesto. A total of 106 people were vaccinated this morning.
Which?
It was the Janssen vaccine, J and J, the one and done.
Janssen.
Yeah. And then I'd also like to remind everyone, we have a blood drive on April 22nd here at the community center. So sign up, come out, and donate for a great cause. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. I did just want to let councilmember Rush and/or councilmember Buck, just to make sure you received the correspondence regarding the Stanislaus County Local Task Force on Solid Waste Management meeting. That will be on April 15th via Microsoft Teams, and that is at 4:00 p.m.
I got it. I received everything.
I received it.
Thank you. And that's it for me.
As the alternate, I'll remain so. Thank you. To me, the development director.
Good evening again. We recently went out for the bid for Walker Place. This is a CDBG funding to put in curb gutter and sidewalk, and then we will replace the road as part of that. And then we did allocate our CDBG funds for that project this year with the expectation that there will be rollover for the next project. And we're looking at possibly Tully Road, which would be just an extension of that work. It would go north, so along Tully Road. And so we were trying to have them all come together, you know, that portion of Walker, as well as when they do the, some improvements to Tully and then to extend it further. So, so we get the best value for the construction that we need. And I believe that's all I have, other than I am extremely appreciative of our administrative staff too. They are lovely people.
Thank you. Director of Finance and Administrative Services.
I'm going to ditto what Mary and Rachel just said, and thank you to our administrative professionals. And other than that, that is it for tonight.
Thank you. Police services.
Good evening, everybody. And me too. I'd like to echo what everybody has said regarding our professional administrators and professional staff, not only the city staff, but us as well at the sheriff's office, not only Renee, who works here at Houston Police Services, but also all the support that the sheriff's office has as well to back her up as well. So thank you very much. And then also, I'm going to be giving a report in regards to the stats that Houston Police Services had from March 11th through March 24th, a two-week period. During that time, Houston Police Services had a total of 42 traffic stops, one subject stop, 19 citations, and six arrests. Two of those arrests were DUI arrest, the other ones were warrant arrests and other violations. And then also this last week, we had our shift change. So there might be some different faces throughout the city. On day shift, the A squad side, we have Peter Rodriguez working day shift. And then graveyard, we have Deputy Castro. And then on the B side, we have Deputy Campos working day shift. And then in the graveyard, we have Deputy Flores. And that is it for now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City attorney.
Nothing, sir.
Thank you. We'll start with council comments. We'll start with councilmember Buonan.
Thank you, Mayor. Not too much happening since we met last, but I think it was quite appropriate that you had Alexis here to receive that award because I'm always banging on the door wanting something. And she's on the phone opening the door and taking care of people. So I think it's appropriate that we recognize all the administrative staff and also recognize the entire staff, Jose and Jaime, all the things that you guys do. See them out in the street all the time working. So maybe they're working because they see me walking, but I don't know, they're always working. But also, Chief, thank you for everything that you guys do out there. I know they keep us safe, so appreciate that. And look forward to a meeting like this. It's nice to see everybody again, see how everybody's doing. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rush.
Aye. Again, I'm just going to reiterate what councilmember Buonan said. I'm glad to finally be someplace other than staring at this little box. I'm glad to be here. I can't wait to actually be in full public where we can have the public with us, as well as just our staff here. So I'm looking forward to that next step. I'm not going to push you too hard on it for a couple more meetings, but I'm looking forward to that, the next step sooner. And that is all I had. Glad we had a good meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Buck.
I'm very pleased to finally be together with everyone personally, and I can speak to the council right now. You guys look much better in person than you do on Zoom. So glad to be here. Also to echo councilmember Buonan's comments about the city guys, Jaime and Jose, I just seems like any time I'm out and about in town, I'm seeing a truck driving around or somebody working on something. And it's just a credit to you guys on how good the city's looking and the things that are going on out there right now. Chief, same with the sheriffs, the police services. I know I'm close to one, you know, he's right across the street, but I see these guys very busy out there. And I know there, it seems like there's a lot going on as far as calls and these types of things, but I know you guys are doing a great job keeping us safe. So thank you. We did have a meeting this last week with the West Turlock Sub Basin GSA. We're having these more often as, as we're getting closer, the TAC, the Technical Advisory Committee, is getting closer and closer to finalizing the 50-year sustainability plan that we need to have in place by January of next year. And the plan is moving along pretty well. Right now, though, we're starting to butt up against other sub-basin GSAs, especially East Turlock. And there seem to be some issues that we think should go one way and they want them to go another way as far as capturing runoff and things like this. So now it's starting to get into possible litigation-type issues. It may not be major, but they could be. But the plan is moving ahead rather well at this point, and I'll keep you updated as we continue to meet. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Hill.
Thank you, Your Honor. I too would like to echo everybody's sentiments for the staff. My wife worked as a confidential secretary for quite a few years, and I always felt she was underappreciated. Anyways, you guys work hard. I see it every day of the week. I come in and nobody's kicking back. They're all grinding away. Police Department, City Services, same way. There's no grass growing under your feet. You're taking care of business. I haven't had anything to attend to for the last two weeks, but I do have about five committee meetings coming up in the next month. It's kind of nice to come out of hibernation. And I too am very, very glad to see all your smiling faces. Thank you.
I too would like to echo the commendations to our administrative staff. There are numerous times I come into City Hall to echo Mayor Pro Tim Hill's comments. They're all busy working. They're not chit-chatting. They're taking care of our city, taking care of our citizens, and doing what needs to be done. So my hat's off to them, and thank you for the great job that you do. But this is also going on to our city staff. The workers who work out in the streets and keep the streets safe and the water running and the lights on, they do a great job. I think everybody who is associated with the City of Houston, who works for the City of Houston, takes a lot of pride in what they do and pride in keeping this city the way it is, one of the most sought-after communities in the county. A lot of other cities want to be like us, and they'll never reach that far. Just my opinion. And with that, I do want to remind everyone that even though Governor Newsom has indicated he will open the state to normal, business as normal, on June 15th, we're not there yet. If more outbreaks come to light, Governor Newsom may keep the state closed. Remember, Stanislaus County had the highest infection rate in the state at one time. We do need to be diligent. I, for one, hate wearing the mask. It just, it's uncomfortable to me. But I will continue to wear it if it keeps the citizens, the employees, the council, and anybody I come in contact with safe. I'm not wearing it now only because it's hard to talk to the microphone with the mask on and let people understand what you're saying. And also, I would really want to encourage council members to set the example. We represent the city, and we interact with the public, and they see us on an everyday basis. So please be diligent, wear your masks in public. I know you're not required to, but we do need to set the example. And we do need to keep everybody safe. We need to keep everybody healthy so that June 15th, the state can open for business. Stanislaus County can open for business. And more importantly, Houston can completely open for business. We have a lot of businesses here we've been supporting. They've done a great job, but I think we need to help them take that next step so we can keep them running and keep them here. So that's it for me for tonight. I believe we are now going into closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, the council is now adjourning in a closed session regarding action items 9.1 through and including 9.4. There are no facts or circumstances to disclose at this time. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Do we turn these off?
Yeah. I don't care.
This one might be easy for you to just grab when you need to do your groups.
Got it.
Okay, thank you Mayor. Council members, the council is reconvened from closed session regarding action items 9.1 through and including 9.4. All of the council members were present during the entirety of the closed session. The only disclosure is in regards to items 9.2 and 9.3. By unanimous vote of the council, the council approved retaining the law offices of Scott Kivell to represent them in both matters. Thank you Mayor.
I will accept a motion for adjourned.
So moved. Second.
Okay. And Councilmember Buck?
Aye.
Councilmember Blannan? Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Mayor Proton? And I. We are adjourned.